Buddy, help my you.
Golden my home.
Golden my home. You look good. Worry about it. It's about Genesis.
All right, you should be good to go, Mr. Chairman.
All set. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I could welcome everybody to the June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five TPZ meeting. Please stand.
First name is Mr. Swooped Black. The Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberating universe.
Approval of your gen, uh, I'm sorry, roll call of, uh, Norrie.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yep.
Commissioner Harpy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Minger.
He's online, I think, right?
Yeah, he's.
He is.
I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Natus.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pasquale.
Here.
Chairman Sobieski.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
And Commissioner Wakama.
Here.
You're all set.
Thank you, Norrie.
You're welcome.
Approval of the agenda, Paul.
No changes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, public participation for items not on the agenda. Please come up if you have any questions or comments you'd like to make on items not on the agenda.
No one online has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Our remarks by commissioners. Any remarks by any of the commissioners? Okay, good. All right, public hearings.
None.
None today.
I'm sorry?
None today.
None this evening.
Okay. Uh, next I'll obtain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I abstained.
Okay, one out, one out, abstentions. Commissioner Natus, thank you. Uh, new business. Paul?
All right, so the first item for new business, um, again, is the site plan modification pursuant to section four point four point six Cedar Mountain Ridgeline Development for construction of an in-ground swimming pool at one oh one Cedarwood Lane in the R twenty residential zone. Applicant contact owner John F. and Susanna A. Kaylee. Um, so this is a little unusual one, um, that's in front of you because in our ridgeline protection zone, uh, we do allow residential construction. Uh, this was previously approved by the TPZ as part of a subdivision. Um, subsequently, the house was slightly reconfigured. Um, that was reviewed with the zoning officer and it found that it didn't encroach anymore into the ridgeline protection zone, so that was okay. And then now they want to add a pool. Again, this is an unusual one where it does say specifically when you go to add structures or accessory structures, it requires site plan approval from the TPZ. So that is what they're here for you tonight. Uh, we do have a couple pictures up there for you to show where the proposed pool is and the applicant is here to kind of go over what they're looking to install and to ask the, uh, commission's approval for their site plan mod.
Thank you. Come up, Mr. Kay. Would you like to come up, please? Please state your name and address for the record. No, have a seat.
Okay, John Kaylee, my wife Susanna. One oh one Cedarwood. And as you mentioned, we're looking to, uh, put a swimming pool in. Um, you have pretty much all the site plans and the information on it. It's a small one, ten by twenty. Uh, it's, it's, it's right towards the back of the house on the left side. So it's not in the ridgeline, I believe. No blasting.
It doesn't, right, so, so the ridgeline.
Okay.
It's, it's this line here, then you can kind of see with the mouse.
Yeah.
And then the pool is here.
Okay.
Yep, so that's the ridgeline setback.
Yeah.
So again, that's the ridgeline setback that goes through the house. You can see the ridgeline uh, further down on the property in the, uh, gray shaded uh, line that's pretty close to the end of their property, um, down the hill.
And the setback is a hundred and fifty feet. That is the setback distance from the ridge.
And actually, Eric, if you'd like to go to the, um, back to the presentation, I put in a couple aerials.
Okay.
So you can kind of see here, um, the property that we're talking about, and the second one will zoom in more, but this gives you kind of a context to the houses that are up on top of the, uh, Cedarwood area. The house that's under construction, you can see in that one, is, uh, one oh one that we are discussing tonight. Uh, you can also just for context, see some of the other houses where they're placed along the ridgeline. You can see that two over, there is an existing pool in the backyard, and there's another house that's set even further back. So if we go to the next slide, this is just a little closer. Again, you can see the property kind of that bottom corner, uh, where the pool is going to be kind of tucked in by the house. Uh, doesn't seem to be that much, uh, abnormal, uh, for what the development is up in that area. Uh, I have not been able to really look around. You might be, have a couple areas in town where you might be able to see the houses up there, especially in the fall, uh, after the trees kind of, you know, lose their leaves, but again, it's an in-ground pool. If the commission has any questions about fences, what they're made of, that's within the commission's purview, just to make sure that you will not see anything up there and it kind of blends in.
Okay.
We have, uh, submitted some pictures from, uh, the fellows who are going to be putting in the pool. Any comments? As far as what you'd like?
This is a sample of the pool from the pool company and the fencing.
And we're going to do, we're going to, we're going to add more trees up and around the area. That's primarily it. As far as fencing, if you guys have any preference, we're open. You know, as long as it meets the standards of, of town and state, we're good. Just her and I.
Yep, and staff's recommendation would typically just be black fencing. Uh, it, it blends the best into any landscape.
Which is what's shown in the picture as well.
What's that? Uh, any questions, so commissioners? Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do the chairman, sir. Uh, you were talking about you adding more trees. Uh, I haven't been up there in a long time, so, I mean, uh, has he, uh, has he done any clear cutting up there?
No, what I'm talking about is every, the trees of all state pretty much the same, but on the border, because well, you can see, uh,
You're going back to the area?
The back end of the house to the side where Cindy is, her closest neighbor. So it looks more aesthetically pleasing to put some shrubs in.
All right, so you're in the old, you're in the, are you in the old, uh, Francis, uh, Francis Callahan house?
No, that's Fran, he's, that's Amber now.
Yeah.
She's down one below me. So when you go up the hill, right, where the lollipop is,
Yeah.
You've got Lisa, Rip's wife, Cindy. Cindy had a lot that I purchased, or we purchased. And then there's farther down, it's your Amber is where, uh, Fred's old house.
Yeah, Fred's house, house is up further up on the mountain in the woods.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, so you're buying Cindy's, you bought Cindy's old house.
Right.
Okay, because I see one fifteen here, is that? Because, uh, I don't know, maybe I'm confused and maybe it doesn't really matter, but if I remember correctly, uh, Rip was, Rip's house was one oh five Cedarwood.
Right.
Yeah, this was, this was a re-subdivision. They cut this out.
Yeah, this is a new lot, new construction.
So when they cut that out, okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, sure.
That sort of was just confusing me. But that's not, that's the engine today, so don't worry about it.
Yes, Commissioner Harpy.
Do you have neighbors that have pools?
Yeah, there's, uh, three others. Lisa has a pool.
Yeah.
Two other ones down here have pools also. Matter of fact, in the picture, that was a prior, you can see it was right in line with the ridge.
And are those pools approximately the size of what you plan to put in?
I think they're a little bigger. We're, we're relatively a small pool, right? We're only five feet deep. It's going to be for our convenience. Now, we don't have any kids, so it's.
Be good, Amber. How many square feet is your, if you don't mind me asking?
Twenty-six hundred, I guess it is, yeah. Twenty, it's a ranch, one level, it's garage, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Maybe a minute, what size? Just a pool?
Ten by twenty, I believe, is size, yeah. Five feet, it's going to be three to five feet deep. It's a nice big, it's a nice big hot tub.
Nice little, yeah, that's all it is, an oversized hot tub. That's cool. Thank you.
Oh, you betcha.
All set, Commissioner Harpy?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Natus, any questions?
Okay.
Commissioner Pasquale.
Um, we, we don't have a, the part of the plan that shows where the pool goes and what part of the.
Yeah, so if you look, it's in your package too.
It's really hard to. Yeah.
I can bring it up here.
No, I don't see it. It's just.
Good.
Can zoom in.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, no, it's so tiny, sorry, I have terrible eyesight. Um, thank you. So this is, it technically, technically going toward the ridgeline, but not in it?
Correct, so it's, it's in the one hundred and fifty foot ridgeline upwind of the area.
Review area, okay.
Yes, not on the ridgeline.
And this, and this doesn't show where the trees are in relation to the pool, does it?
Well, pretty much what you could do is if you look at that and you see the kind of silk fence line, that's the line of disturbance. So that's kind of where you see where the trees kind of are and, you know, as their plan is to kind of reinforce somewhere around the pool, some privacy. But yeah, it, it's within the area that was previously, uh, proved to be cleared as part of the lot's construction.
Okay.
And I don't believe they cleared as much as they could have. It's, it's kind of selective. There's some stuff in the aerials that are still close to the house.
Good. Okay, yep.
Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, I see no issues, uh, with the, the applicant's application. It's not going to interfere with the, uh, ridgeline. It's already within an area that they've been approved clear, so I'm not thinking on any more trees.
Commissioner?
It has to come in.
Commissioner Wakama. Any questions? No, Commissioner Minor?
No questions or concerns, I give Mr. Chair.
I really don't have any either. Uh, we're going to open us up to the general public if they.
It's just a site plan mod.
Site plan.
Oh, a site plan, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay.
Very good, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yep. So again, we're under new business right now. Um, if you are, it sounds like you might be inclined, um, to approve. Uh, staff has provided you a motion. Uh, there's two motions there, and again, if you are satisfied with the plan, uh, there is a motion to approve.
All right, everybody satisfied with this plan?
Move it to open some.
Okay. Uh.
Yep, it doesn't need to be moved.
It doesn't need to be.
Be acted upon under new business.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to read it, read in the motion, okay?
Yep, and you can, uh, omit that with conditions if they choose, because unless you have some.
Got it. Okay. Petition TPZ twenty-five dash thirteen site plan modification to section four point four point six Cedar Mountain Ridgeline Development for construction of an in-ground swimming pool at one oh one Cedar Lane in the R twenty residential zone. Applicant contact owner John F. and Susanna A. Kaylee. Motion to approve, um, the application meets the requirements as in section four point four point six.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. In fact, we're going to move this to all biz, uh, kind of.
No, we just.
That was quick.
Indeed it was.
Yep, it's just a break, it's a requirement, it says the TPZ.
They already went home.
Yeah, TPZ's got to make that decision.
Item, item B. Uh, Larry, Paul?
Yep, so item B is the referral for eight twenty-four for the Garfield Street CCGP, which stands for the Community Connectivity Grant Project, uh, and municipal improvements along Garfield Street. Uh, tonight, we have, uh, town engineer Chris Zavideo with us, and he will kind of go over a short presentation on the plan. Kind of provided a staff report which reviewed some areas and sections of the POCD that I found that could be applicable um, to this project, but any other items that the TPZ views and the POCD as well are generally what you'd be looking for when you're reviewing this project. So I will, I'll bring up the application now, and, oh, Chris, if you want to do it from here or from?
Excellent, here, it's the PowerPoint format.
I'm good. You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
I did such a great job managing that at the town council, I figured I'd have you guys do it.
All right. Let's see.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, Chris Zavideo, town engineer. A couple weeks ago, or at least it seems like a couple weeks ago, I did this presentation for the town council, and it seems like a reiteration of this is the easiest way to address this eight twenty-four referral question. Uh, so this was intended as a, a project update for the town council. So we put this PowerPoint together for that. And next slide, please. So the little history on the project, the project, this project started off with a community connectivity grant, which is intended to connect the Market Square and Milpon Park areas by dedicated bike lanes, improved crosswalks, completing the sidewalk route from Willard to Main and to the park, and includes, uh, rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks. And this project was delayed by multiple things that went on in between two thousand eighteen, when the grant was awarded, such as the building, uh, that we're sitting in, and questions about how this would have benefited, impacted by the pool. Well, the pool referendum didn't pass and this building is completed, so now we need to complete this grant. Uh, it also includes a few other features such as the electric vehicle charging stations, uh, grant work that we got from the Volkswagen settlement. And it has, uh, and in that case, that infrastructure is installed. If you've been over to the municipal parking lot by the library, you'll see that there's, uh, conduits coming up, put on the ground wrapped in plastic bags. We're just waiting on our transformer from EverSource and then we can install the, uh, actual charging stations themselves. So that work is, uh, essentially completed. Um, related to that work also, just as an aside, is we did finish the parking lot lighting upgrades, so the light fixtures now match what's in the library parking lot, and this is, uh, this is all again, stuff that was started before my tenure here began, so we're bringing these things to completion. So this brings me to the next part of my little speech here, is this project has grown over the eight years since the grant award. It is a combination of several other smaller projects that have all been delayed for one reason or another, whether it's the building in town hall or whatnot. And it just made sense to put them all together into one master project. It's easier to administer the construction activities that way they're related. And so what this is now, this whole project now is the mill and overway of the entire length of Garfield Street from Willard to Main. Uh, the bike paths and completed sidewalks that were required in the grant. Um, the reconditioning, regrading and reservicing of the town hall parking lot where the charging stations are, and the parking lot down at the Willard end of Garfield, that is the remnants of where Garfield Street used to be. So that will be regraded so that it drains correctly to the catch basin that's in the grassy area there. Uh, and we will be constructing a sidewalk from the existing walks on Willard along the back of that parking lot to connect to the sidewalk system that now exists along Garfield Street, so we'll have complete sidewalk connectivity from one end to the other. Uh, and as part of that, we are realigning the crosswalks, which is part of the grant requirements. Two of the four crosswalks are here at town hall. One would be the walk that's right out from the building that goes to the, uh, park now. Currently, if you want to use the crosswalk, you have to dog leg across and over and, and that and whatnot. So we are going to bring that crosswalk directly across the street as well as a crosswalk from Mazacoli. They'll be connected by a small run of, uh, sidewalk on the south side of Garfield. And then from there, an ADA accessible route will run up into the park and connect to the existing walks in the neighborhood of where the, um, I, it's, it's referred to me as the workout station that's over there, uh, where the other walk that goes around the park and pond currently connects in. And so that, along with the, uh, Board of Ed's desire to pave the existing gravel parking lot that they have now makes up this entire collection of roughly six projects into one project. Um, last part of this, uh, part that's probably the most noteworthy for those who pay attention to, uh, the word in the air, uh, is the trees at the park. So there are five white pines and one oak tree directly across from this building, and when we build that ADA accessible ramp, now we've looked at several different places to put this ramp. And the one that seems to work best runs right through that standard trees. And that's sort of the camel, uh, strutter, both camels back. We have all kinds of infrastructure in the root system of those five trees. We have water service to the park there. We have water service to the bus garage there. We have underground electric to the park there. We have fiber optic to the park there. We have overhead electric along Garfield, and we have overhead electric to the park. Uh, this combination of all of this infrastructure that's in amongst the root systems of these white pines, plus the construction activities for the ADA accessible, uh, ramp, the root or sidewalk, I should call it, um, which would cut into the root systems of these trees makes saving these trees somewhat challenging. Uh, the infrastructure alone would be reason enough for me to suggest they come down, but when we cut through them to put the walkway in and have a walkway under the trees where you don't want it icing up in the winter, so you want to have some sunshine on there in the wintertime to keep icing forming, it just became an issue, so we decided to take these trees down, and that process is currently going through the tree warden and the park commission. Uh, park commission met last week and agreed to have these trees down. The ones that are in the right of way are the tree warden's jurisdiction solely, and we're working through this whole process. One last item is that the area of the, the bus, uh, parking area, which is in the Wetlands Upwind Review Area, is currently in front of Conservation Commission for their consideration. So this is why we are bringing this project to this commission for the eight twenty-four referral. I'll take questions.
Any questions, so commissioners?
Uh, we do have this nice PowerPoint, which again, I kind of forgot to scroll through.
I was working through it while you were discussing it, uh, and kind of highlighting the areas. I'll just put to the commission's, uh, attention. Um, what I did is just a quick little markup to, just to kind of show you where the utilities are in this area. You have this white pine, which actually has the water service wrapping all around the tree. Uh, you have the water pit on, the meter pit, I believe, is on one side. You have the utilities, you have power going to it. Uh, you have overhead wires going through these trees, overhead wires on the other side, and there's actually fiber optic um, on the outside of here on that one, and actually, I think there is a small fiber optic connection, at least to something that they mounted on the pole as well. So the area is pretty busy with utilities.
I do just want to make the point, because I didn't make it earlier, is that the oak tree is now on the chopping block.
Not.
Not.
No.
The oak tree is not involved in any of the utilities or in the way of the path.
Uh, yes.
I like that tree. I'm happy to keep it. Oh, also, uh, as I stated to the town council, is that we, it's, we don't have a, a planting plan to show this. It wasn't part of the original scope of the, of the project as we were putting this together, but I stated on the record, which means I'm going to do it, is that we're going to plant some additional, I said dogwoods and magnolias. People like dogwoods, people don't like magnolias. I like them both, but ultimately, it'll be the park board's decision along with staff, what types of trees go in, but we're going to replace the trees that we cut down with some nice flowering trees along that general area, and the locations are to be determined.
Uh, any question? Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, I have no problem with this at all. I think it's consistent with our POCD as well, with our, all of our zoning regulations. Um, the only comment that I will make, um, and I love dogwood trees. Unless you go with a Chinese dogwood, a cuska dogwood, dogwood's right now, Florida dogwood, which is a native dogwood to the state, unfortunately, they're not available. They, and they're dying. So if you put it in, you might get, possibly about five, you might get one to live, and so if you go with a magnolia or.
Okay, I've got a beautiful cuska dogwood, and that's where my, why, my love of that tree comes.
Go with a cuska and.
Yeah, it's flowering right now. It's white, it's beautiful.
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only difference between a cuska and a Florida is the native dogwood, flowers, then leaves. The cuska dogwood, leaves, then flowers. That's the only difference.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods.
And obviously, one's not native to the state. Native to China.
Any other questions from any commissioners? Commissioner Harpy?
You know, uh, I don't know if this is a question for Chris or somebody else, but if you read the legislation on the grant, this particular grant, continuity, community grant, uh, it doesn't really match up as, uh, this plan, it's a good plan, but it's, it's, it's in an imperfect way that it doesn't match the requirements of the grant. So if you read the grant, only used for construction activities, costs associated with other activities such as engineering rights away, negotiations, acquisitions, and public improved involvement are the responsibility of the municipality. Activities eligible for funding under this program shall improve access to conditions for active transportation users. Such improvements include, but are not limited to, construction facilities for pedestrian, bicycle, and transit users. Multi-use trails are eligible under this as well. And I say that because I, uh, I don't have a problem with this, where this state does things, but Robbins Avenue, those bike tracks, or whatever you want to refer to them, on the markings. I don't know where the clubs are at. They don't use them anymore. And I would defy anyone to find one person. I, I go there early in the morning to meet with clients. I'm there mid-morning, I'm there late in the afternoon, and I wish it were used, because I think it's pretty well laid out. But the use, I know one club that used to come over from Buttersfield has disbanded. And I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just wondering if the state should move this in a different fashion as part of a different project that they could suggest to us that they would support. Because I'm concerned that it won't be used to the extent that we think it could be used, or the state, I, I don't know if there's any monitoring of that. It's not a big issue, I understand. With all the other responsibilities you have on this project, Chris, I'm sure this isn't, you know, Mecca, but, uh, I would say that that's one concern. Now, I believe this grant, is it up to eight hundred thousand still, do you know?
This particular grant award was for seventy-eight thousand and some three or four hundred dollars. Uh, and it's, and it's eight years since it was awarded. The grant program has changed. Uh, it now has higher limits, it now has other things that are included, possibly some things that aren't included. Uh, but the important part of it is that, um, it's covering a very small portion of the overall project.
So you look for some fairly significant contribution out of our pocket?
There is a significant contribution out of CIP. Uh, as I said, this is six different projects that were put together into one, and so each of them had a different funding source under the CIP program. Uh, this and the EV charging stations are the only two that are grant funded.
So, uh, I know the council committed in the CIP, and I may be off on this, roughly three hundred thousand dollars for the bituminous topping, or I could have these reversed, maybe two hundred thousand dollars for the bituminous topping that you anticipate putting down where the buses are parked. And then three hundred thousand roughly. I'm, I'm just talking about CIP money, so a little over half a million is in the CPI encumbered, the readings that I'm getting.
So the bus parking lot area is Board of Ed CIP funding. It is three hundred thousand dollars. It includes, uh, improvements to the stormwater system and movement of all of the power and, uh, data for the lighting and the, um, security cameras on the parking area
Right.
to underground conduit. So we're, we're moving the pole that's in the middle of the lot. We're getting rid of those jersey barriers. We're providing underground power to, now there'll be three poles instead of one. That will have better camera coverage, that will have better lighting coverage. The surface being improved to bituminous will make a better, safer walking area for the bus drivers, especially in the wintertime.
No, I, I don't, you don't need to defend it. To me, I understand the importance of taking care of those things. But I'm not sure it matches up. And maybe that's for another party to discuss the council, that it matches up with eligible versus ineligible items. That you'll no doubt get that letter.
Regarding eligible items for the grant, uh, the rapid flashing beacons, which have also changed over time and have become more expensive as a result of that, and do more things, uh, will eat up the entire amount of the grant. So as far as non-participating funds in the grant, um, the majority of the grant, the original grant request work is either being incorporated into things like the mill and overway, which take out the work item for removing the crosswalks, as an example. Uh, as, by the time you get done doing just the rapid flashing beacons, you've spent the seventy-eight thousand dollars. So the whole rest of that.
Grab some other grants somewhere else.
Well, one of the problems we've got is we have to clear up our backlog of grants in order to be eligible for more grants. So I have to complete this project. I have to complete all the lots of grants. I have to complete the urban area grants. I have to get all these grants completed that are left over from as far back as when Chris Greenlaw had my seat. Uh, so we need to get these things finished.
I'm talking about down the road, if there was something else, but, uh, you'll be well into your project, I presume, before it materialize.
That doesn't mean we're not still looking for more grants. We do that routinely.
Yep, and we've been encouraged by the DOT to clear this one.
Yep, and we've been encouraged by the D O T to clear this one again, since the rules have changed, um, for the community connectivity grants, and they've increased the amount of money that could be eligible, that we haven't been eligible to apply for those.
Have you seen the eligible ineligible listing, has that come to?
As far as work items? Yes, I'm familiar with that.
They provided you with that, the state, under this grant?
Uh, well, again, our grant, the one that we applied for, is a slightly different flavor of the grant that you're looking at. You're probably looking at a printout from the current guidelines.
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah, our, our grant application is eight years old, actually nine, if you look at when it was originally applied for.
But has the state sent you a list of eligible ineligible, or have you taken that to the state? These are the.
We're, we're currently in the process of getting the final level of approval from the state, but as I said earlier, only one of the eligible work items.
I understand that, Chris, I'm saying, have you received the list of eligible ineligible, have you produced the list of eligible ineligible projects to the state?
Projects or work items?
Well, you can call them whatever you want to call them, part of the project, the work items of the project.
So, no, I have not specifically requested that.
Alright, the other thing I wanted to, uh, suggest is on page thirty-four of our company has a plan of development, uh, the planner has quite a bit to say in the defense of trees, just generally in trees, that we should ner- nourish them and maintain them. And I think that's something that even the smartest of us would make a mistake and have no doubt about what they're doing should pay attention to, and I'm not applying that to you. Um, what started the tree fiasco was the public notice of tree removal, nothing that you did, but that the dog, uh, tree warden was very candid and honest about, he put for construction purposes.
That is because I requested it for the construction project.
Not looking for anybody to play defense, I just want to get these facts out on the table. And yet Parks and Rec hadn't issued a letter to the board. By process, by what the superintendent Parks and Rec told me, that letter hadn't gone out by omission. So he worked on that basis, not that the trees were sick, or that they were dead or anything else. The last thing I would say that, um, I think it's going to be a nightmare putting a budget together on this, because it bifurcated in many different areas in the, uh, budget. There are numbers in C P I, there are numbers here, there, that all collectively probably give what you, what you want, but, um, I don't see it as really consistent with economic development, but it's a good plan, it's a good street plan. So I intend to vote for it, thank you.
Yeah, I'll start, Commissioner Harpy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fox, you have anything?
Commissioner Harpy?
No. Commissioner Nafis?
Wouldn't know what they had there. They gave you the project, and trees, while I heard the people, actually an arborist, who said, they're not magnificent trees, they're not going to grow up to be magnificent trees, and leave them in there and, you know, take the chance on safety, doesn't make any sense to me.
Commissioner Wakoma?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Minor?
I have no issues with the plan presented.
Alright, take a roll call vote, please, Norrie, I'll vote last.
I would actually recommend a, uh, motion.
Sorry?
I recommend, I have a motion prepared.
Alright, okay, sorry.
Motion.
Yep. So petition TPZ two-five dash one-four. Referral.
I'd like to vote now.
Yep.
We all set?
TPZ two-five dash one-four referral eight dash twenty-four Garfield Street C C G P and municipal improvements. Um, so, uh, to make an, we would basically make a recommendation for a favorable referral based on Connecticut General statutes, section eight dash twenty-four, referral Gar- Garfield Street C C G P and municipal i- improvements. The project does not conflict with the plan of conservation and development.
Okay.
And then with the motion, and then after a second, then I would recommend the roll call vote.
We need a motion, I'll second the motion. Alright, motion made in second. Alright.
Commissioner Harpy?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Nafis?
Yes.
Commissioner Pascarioli?
Yes.
Chairman Sobieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes. Motion passes.
You're all set.
I'm sorry? You almost won that. Okay. I'll start with that, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Next is, uh, old business?
Yep, so I'll report on TPZ twenty-five eleven, again, this is the special permit for, uh, used motor vehicle sales. Uh, they were at, uh, your last TPZ meeting, they have not submitted any updated plans yet, we are working with them, but they are bringing on a, uh, design professional who is doing the new plans, uh, who represent them. So hopefully we'll get something for you soon and be scheduling the public hearing for it.
Your recommendation is to keep it open for the next meeting?
Uh, just to table it. And I have a recommended, it's actually technically tabled, you can motion to table it again since I updated you.
It should be on that list here. Motion table.
Okay.
Uh, TPZ twenty-five dash eleven special permit, section three point one seven point eight for a used motor vehicle sales and service use at one fifteen Payne Road in the P D Plan Development Zone. Applicant contact John in Contro, owner H and M Property Holdings LLC. Application received five twenty-eight twenty-five. Sixty-five days to open hearing, open public hearing is eight point twenty-two-five. Move to table the application until the July ninth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Right. Second. Roll, roll.
Commissioner Nafis second.
Yep, second, Nafis seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Paul? Thank you. Uh, petition for scheduling, Paul?
Uh, so that one is, um, I can report that it's the, uh, pickleball application, um, for Lowry Place. Uh, when the, uh, last publication went out, we originally had it for tonight, uh, but it was missing, um, the owner information that slipped through. So we re-advertized it, and that'll be, uh, at the next meeting on the ninth, that they'll come in for their public hearings.
And your, uh, current land use applications?
Yep, so again, that's, uh, the general ones that are out there, the current land use applications, we kind of keep that up there. Um, and then for moving on to the next item for, uh, town planner update, um, I did include something on communications, um, for tomorrow's meeting, uh, for the, uh, town center, uh, master plan. Uh, we're gonna have a workshop tomorrow, uh, at six o'clock right here in council chambers. Again, that's going to be going over what the draft, uh, master plan is, again, it's draft right now. Again, we're not going to move to a final plan until we get the input, and then we'll have a draft plan that comes after that, and then there'll be another chance for written input at that point. So anyone who still wants to come to a meeting and come together as a group and discuss this, voice your opinions, concerns, what you feel is good about the plan, missed about the plan, this is a good, uh, way to just keep us in the right direction, uh, what the community wants to see.
Um, we did, um, put this in a reminder.
Yes.
And everything else, right?
Put in the rare reminder, um, we went out to local businesses, it was on the fire department's E M C sign as well, too.
I just want to make sure it's, it's out there so we can say that they didn't see it, okay, thank you. Let's see, okay, letters from Crog we have in the packet, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, and if there's any question on those?
No.
Okay. Alright, second round of public participation, may wish to speak on items that were not on the agenda.
There are some people online, but none of them have their hand raised at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to remarks by commissioners, any remarks by commissioners? Okay. Uh, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight, it was hot out there, so.
You're home early.
I'll extend a motion to adjourn.
Ooh. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a good night, everybody.